Welcome, everyone, to our Planning Commission meeting tonight for... What's the date? For June 14th, 2022. We're glad that you're here. Everyone is here. We have 100% attendance for our council people.
Are we live on YouTube yet?
Okay. And this is the portion of our meeting where we have public comment. If anybody has come here to discuss anything that's not on the schedule for tonight and would like to make any comments, this would be the time. You're welcome to come up and make those comments. We do ask if you do that your time be limited to three minutes. Is there anybody that'd like to come forward? All right. Then we're ready for presentation and reports. Mr. Egan?
Thank you. As I noted in the work session, we have a couple of businesses that are in process with Maverick, Cheddar's, Scratch Kitchen, and Take Five has officially taken their building permit out and started their construction. I did note that Cheddar Scratch Kitchen's a little bit delayed because of a Lowe's access agreement that's trying to get hammered out, but we hope to have that done very soon. In the meantime, the site still need to do a few things to get prepared for the building to start to be erected on that. And then I did note that RC Willie is pretty much all but empty. So if you have any last desires, get a couple of 10 items. That's about all that's left inside is what I had to report from the building official today. So it's pretty vacant in there, unfortunately. But it is, it seems to be now that we have a better understanding, a large play by RC Willie to do this with multiple RC Willie locations throughout the state. This is just one of the few that were on the list to be vacated. And then the question came up earlier, if J-Dog's still forthcoming into the building where Starbucks is, the answer would be yes. We just don't know when and how that will occur. And then finally, we did talk about briefly, there is a shortage of concrete which will likely affect the Maverick site. So if Maverick slows down, that's the reason for that. But it is still moving forward. So don't worry, they're not going to do a building halfway and let's stop. So that's pretty much all I have, and I defer if you have any other questions for me at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. On the consent items, anybody have any changes they'd like to make?
Let me make a motion. We approve the consent items as written?
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that's unanimous. Action items. Number one, it's a public hearing to receive and consider comments regarding the proposed rezon request from agricultural A1 zoning to single-family residential R16 zoning for property located at approximately 3450 South Parker Drive, Riverdale, Utah, as requested by Hugh Park. Mr. Egan?
Thank you. I'll just cover briefly the executive summary and then defer to you to move forward with the public hearing. Mr. Park is present in the attendance tonight to answer any questions as we discuss this following the public hearing. The petitioner or property owners are James and Julie Purin. The surrounding zoning at the property is A1, R18. So A1 to the north and east, R18 to the south, and the southeast is R2. Surrounding the property, it's approximately four acres of land. As required by state code, we are required to have a public hearing and advertise for such. We've done that in accordance with state code in all the appropriate locations and have put a sign on the property. The, let's see, the property is currently vacant. Sat vacant for many years. The general plan guidance, which the general plan is an advisory document established for guiding, or guidance regarding land use decisions, states that the area is currently set as agricultural. Proposed rezon request and project concept request is not in compliance with this land use designation and does differ from language in Area 5 of the Riverdale general plan as found in our land use master plan. And that documentation of general plan, Area 5, is found in the packet as well as following the application in your packet. The application for Mr. Park is found thereunder with the application fee paid, the location shown, all the legal items met, and then responses A through D are found on page... I don't know what page that is. Looks like maybe page 16 in your packet. Following that, you'll see then the Area 5 documentation, a site of the area and the change around it, and then the checklist showing that the public hearing requirements have been fulfilled. With that, there's really not a whole lot more to say, and I would defer to the Planning Commission to move forward with the public hearing as you see appropriate. Thank you.
Make a motion. We open the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that is unanimous as well. Mr. Park, would you like to?
Just open it up to the public at large.
Okay, to the public. Sorry. If you'd like to come and make a comment, please feel free to come forward and state your name and your city of residence.
My name is Veldon Wardle. And sorry, what else was I supposed to state?
Where you live.
Oh, I live 584 West, 3500 South. My property, my house, actually, the back property line is, it borders this property that's in question. So I'm not opposed to development of property. I mean, I understand that's what happens. I guess some of the concerns that I have are the plan for the development. From what I understand, the lot sizes are fairly small and the home heights are fairly tall. And with smaller lot sizes, that means property, the buildings will be closer to the property lines. And that's one of the concerns that I had. You know, when our house was built 13 years ago, we were supposed to have an extended third car garage that we couldn't build because it would have been too close to the property line. So we, the city wouldn't let us build it. We were supposed to have a covered patio deck on the back of our house that would have been too close to the property line, so the city wouldn't let us build it. I understand those things, and I'm not upset about that. I just feel like if we have those codes in place when we built our property, that's what should be in place for the properties abutting us, too, is the same thing. So if it's going to be developed, they should have the same restrictions and requirements that we have in our neighborhood abutting us. So that's one, I guess, comment that I would have. The other concern that I have is several years ago, there was a tremendous amount of fill that was brought into that property. Right now, if you walk out from my fence, there's about a 10-foot space, excuse me, and then the property goes up about four feet. So it's about the height of this podium where it goes up. So if homes are built there on a proper, on the level that's four feet higher than my property, it's going to drain into my property, and I'm going to have a swamp in my backyard, just because that's where everything's going to drain. So if it is approved to rezon, then my feeling is it needs to be brought back down to the level that it was before, before all that fill was put in there, so that I don't have my property being a swamp and impacted by what's built. So again, I'm not opposed to the development because I get, I mean, that's what I have. I live in an area that someone probably didn't want developed at 1.2. I mean, that's just what happens. But I just feel like if that's going to happen, that the same requirements should be in place for them as they are for me right next door to them, and that they should have, they need to be aware of my property. They were the ones who raised it up, and I don't want all this water draining into my property and me having to deal with that and it costing me money. So if it is approved, I just feel strongly that should be one of the things that should be part of it, is it needs to be brought back to where it was seven or eight years ago before all the fill was brought in.
Can I ask you a question? Do you have a problem with drainage coming over from that onto your property right now?
Currently, no. There is, there's, I mean, no one's living there, and so there's no sprinklers, there's no, nothing happens. When it rains, obviously, there's, it fills in there, but it doesn't rain enough that it stays for very long. So it'll be a couple of days there, and then it'll be gone.
What about in the winter time? Does it, when we do have a lot of snow, does it impact from that side to yours?
The same thing. I mean, for a few days or a couple of weeks, but then once the snow's melted, it's gone. But, you know, my concern would be if, when houses are built, they have lawns and they water their lawns, and it will be a frequent thing. It won't be, you know, once every three months kind of thing.
You do know these, with this R6, they're bigger lots than they originally were going to be, don't you?
I believe ours were required quarter acre lots. Is that what the R6 is as well?
No.
No.
So again, that's what, fair is fair, and if what's good for one should be good for the other, I think.
I'm just saying that before they were going with, what was in the R4?
R1 4.5 at the last rezon request.
And those were 4,000 square foot lots?
4,500, yes.
And these are?
6,000 with R16. That's the minimum.
Yeah.
And your area is minimum of 8,000 square foot lots?
Yeah.
But the ones on the back where he's talking about, they have to be at least a quarter acre in that back area.
Yeah. So again, I'm not opposed to the development. I just think that it should, the consideration should be the same for that development as it was for mine. I had to change my plan and couldn't do some of the things that I wanted to do. And I get there's reasons for it, and I support that. I really do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Your name?
Hi, I'm Marilyn Hancock. I live at 623 South, 3650 West. Thank you. In the same subdivision. I also have concerns about the lot sizes, some of the restrictions in that, of the subdivision versus what's in the current subdivision River Glen, and then also with the flooding. We all experienced flooding several years ago, and the area's swampy, and they have raised up the property there and have the same concerns that Veldon does about the flooding in the area and how they're going to take care of the runoff and what, how they're going to pipe that into the drainage system, so.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
So I'm Linda Barrett. I live at 630 West, 3650 South. And I guess a couple of concerns. I was just wondering if they've done a traffic impact study? Does anyone know that?
Do we know, Mike?
That's something you could ask after the public hearing, so just note that as part of your comments.
Okay. And yeah, because there's some pretty severe curves down in that area, and traffic coming in and out of this area is going to be a little bit scary for people. And I guess the other thing was the water situation, because we're going to start building another subdivision, but yet, you know, the governor and everyone's telling us shut down watering and don't do this, don't do that, water twice a week now. But there's going to be additional housing now. So have they planned or prepared for, okay, now how much more water are we going to need for this? So that was another thing I was thinking about. I guess that was it. Those couple of things there.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else? Do you have a motion that would be in order? Oh, she's coming up.
I'm a little, I'm prepared tonight, so I apologize. I actually had a letter written up for the first meeting, but tonight was just kind of last minute. I apologize. I'm Raylin Bowman. My property is 630 West, 3500 South. My property as well backs that property line. We were the last home built in that subdivision. I think prior to that, the lot sat empty for a very long time. And I think my home was supposed to be a through street to that development in the future. All I really have to say is I strongly oppose to anything developed that is less than 8,000 square foot lot. I look out there every day, just disappointment to think I'm going to have these tall houses behind me and lose that view. And not only that, all the wildlife we see almost on a nightly basis, deer and all kinds of things. So I do understand that it's not forever. I mean, I potentially realize that something would be going back there eventually, but just I strongly oppose to any, the 4,000 to 5,000 square foot lots, 6,000 square foot lots. I do not want two properties in my backyard. And again, the water issues and what they've done to just basically destroy the property back there is very concerning, and I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Tammy Donahue. I live at 606 West, 3500 South. I spoke at the last public hearing. Thank you for listening to me again, but I have the same concerns as everyone in the room. You know, we've built, we didn't build the house. We bought 10 years ago from a gentleman that lived there, and I just would rather have the same size of property that I have, so my values stay the same. And I do have a little bit of water issue along that fence line when it does rain and when it snows. So my yard does get a little bit mushy. So I would prefer it stayed the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, if we're finished with the comments.
Like, make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that is unanimous as well.
I would read the second item, Part B, and then invite Mr. Park up.
All right. Thank you. Consideration to forward a recommendation to the city council regarding the proposed rezon request from agricultural A1 zoning to single-family residential R16 zoning for property located at approximately 3450 South Parker Drive, Riverdale, Utah, 84405, as requested by Hugh Park.
Invite him up.
Mr. Park?
Thank you for your time and also a lot of the comments that were made. We understand a lot of the issues that have gone on this piece of property. And to be honest, we are hoping to resolve some of the issues that have been brought up here. In our previous call, in our previous meeting, we were asking for an R4.5. We're not aware, at that point in time and in going through the process, we came across the general plan that calls out and specifically talks about this specific piece of property in the city general plan. It states, "A large piece of property in this area is zoned A1 and may be developed as low-density residential. When development occurs, utilities are available and perhaps only slab-on-grade structures would be allowed. Development in such manner with adjacent to the Weber River Trail system and other open space amenities could in fact result in continuation of quality residential development." And in the city code, Section 10-9B-1, "The purpose of the R110, R18, and R16 zone classification is to provide regulated areas for single-family residential and the use of three low-density levels." So we are asking for a low-density where the general plan asks, tells us that we can develop in a low-density. That is why we're asking for 6,000 square foot lots. We, the last time we came before you, I believe we had 16 lots. They averaged between five and six, five and 5,500 square feet. We've put together a new plan. This will include 14 lots. Those lots range anywhere from about 6,500 square, well, 6,600 square feet up to 8,800 square feet. So what that allows us to do, if you pull a plat and look at the lots that are adjacent to us, those lots are 8,000 square feet, 8,200 square feet, 8,000 square feet, 9,700 square feet. The largest lot is 11,888 square feet. So we are fairly consistent, you know, between 6,600 and 8,500 square feet with our lots as to what's next door. Some of the issues that have been brought up by Veldon and Tammy are very, you know, valid concerns. The property is high in that area. We have done a lot of research, a lot of, we've consulted three separate engineers. We've done grounds testing. We've found out where water tables are. We are planning on slab-on-grade homes, so there are not going to be any basements. So our basement level, our, our living levels are going to be above the curb and gutter. And the curb and gutter, right now, the previous owner has put a bunch of ground in the middle or some fill in the middle, and it's come up quite high. As Veldon said, it comes up, I think, three to four feet from his home, and it slopes off into him right now. Our intent is to take and push that back and cut that down. We don't want to be higher than the existing properties around us. We're going to have to transition down. Code, city code and building code also require that you retain your water on your own property. When I say retain, you have to give it somewhere to flow off and go to a drainage source. So we can't come in and just take all of our water and push it off onto someone else. And so our engineers in developing our subdivision will take this into consideration and give us grades that we've got to cut down to and where we're going to put, as far as exactly where the ground's going to be right now. I'll be honest, I cannot tell you because we haven't done any survey. We haven't done anything of that nature as far as deep design is, you know, as our, how deep's the sewer and the storm drain and all these things that have to be brought in. We don't have that exact number, but I know that with the design of the city engineer and our engineers, we have to take that into consideration and not push water onto other people.
It's my understanding that even each lot cannot have water that drains onto the lot next door. Is that correct?
You're supposed to have an area, a common area where this water can go, and if it needs to sit on a prop, for example, between you and your neighbor. How, where, where does that water go? You kind of both go towards the middle, right? And so, and then you try and get it to come out to the street or to the back property line, but give it somewhere so you're not flooding your neighbor out. And so that's the concept, the idea, because everybody is going to have runoff, and we try and give it a place to go so that we're not pushing it onto somebody else and flooding somebody, someone else out. And so we're not going to ever have a problem with our basements flooding and things of that nature because we don't have any basements, and all our living space will actually be above curb level. And so that is one of the problems that we do want to solve is these problems that they're experiencing with their flooding.
Can you explain again where one homeowner said he has four feet? How you're going to bring that property so that he doesn't have a negative impact from any runoff or anything? I mean, you're going to bring that all the way down to his level and then taper it back up, or?
At this point in time, that's, I don't know exactly where that's going to end up. Because if you go out and look at the property, you stand it back on the street on Parker Lane, if you park out there and look at it, you can look and you can see the ground goes up in the middle and then drops down off like this. And so I think when they were bringing it in, and I think they brought it in back in 2006 or '07, I can't remember when it was, but then when they were bringing this in, it looks like to me nobody was out there saying, okay, we need to keep our grades at this level. They just started bringing stuff in and just pushing and leveling it out. Well, not just smoothing it out. And so we've got quite a hump in the middle of this property that needs to be brought down, and whether we push that back or whatever we do, we'll be told by the engineer what to do. But our intent is to be about the same level where our current neighbors are now.
For the whole, the whole subdivision area, or?
Again, I don't know, because we haven't shot any points, but that is our intent, that we cannot, you know, wash them out. We could be a foot or two higher than them. I don't know how much, you know, I don't know if the general slope of the whole, of the whole ground is coming down this direction, and therefore naturally we have to be above them a little bit. But our intent is not to be way up here with them down here like this. And so we may have some two-story homes with this redesign. We're looking at having, you know, we had 45-foot wide lots, and we're doing kind of a narrow two-story home, but now we may include some ramblers. We might have a one and a half story, a two-story. I don't know about a one and a half story, but a two-story type home or a rambler type home. And so there will be, we will bring that ground, it has to come down some because right now it almost comes up and then down. And our intent, when we talked about with the engineer, is that we're actually going to slope this street down towards the river and use the drainage that subdivision are existing, are currently draining in right there. And so we're going to have an actual negative slope to our cul-de-sac back to, towards the river. And so that means both sides of that are going to have to come down some.
Can I ask a question? Last time you were here, you said that you were going to slope the ground down to the river and that the back part of the property would not be, you didn't put no construction there. So that has stayed the same?
That has stayed the same. That's why we lost, that's why we removed two lots. We got, we have 14 lots now, because we only have a certain amount of area to build in on the front of the property. The back of the property is an area where we can't build. It's an area where the subdivision currently brings water off of Parker Drive, brings it down a pipe along our north property line and just lets the stormwater run out onto our property. And so that was designed years ago by UDOT, and the city has allowed people to tie, other subdivisions to tie into there and go down and just drain out on our property, and then it percolates into the ground. So we can't go any further than that. There's a certain point where we have to stop, and we're not going to be developing it back there. We've got about an acre of open space back there.
One acre.
So is that on the west side of your property?
On the east side.
On the east?
So if you take it, if you actually taken, you know, 14 lots into four acres, what is that? Three lots per, over three lots per acre, which is the same as a, is the R18 subdivision, you know, next to us. They're about, if I remember right, they're about 3.2.
How much effect does the runoff from Parker on the, you know, on the west side of those storage units? How much does the, does that, or does that property get affected by the runoff coming?
Doesn't get affected because it's all piped. So it comes down, it, there's a pipe on the west side of Parker, and there's some storm drain inlet boxes down there. If you go and drive along there, you'll see the boxes. And so there's water that runs off into there. It comes down and turns and goes east along our north property line.
So it's kind of on that curb area there?
And then it goes east, and then on our, on our east property and the last acre back there, the state just, they developed this pipeline in this, the easement was from the late '50s, early '60s, if I remember right, and they just allowed them to, the state wouldn't allow that anymore. They're going to have to have a, you know, a certain place to drain water, but at that point in time, they just let it go out on the ground and just let it be. And so that has to remain because it's been there for so long. In fact, there's two or three subdivisions, as the Public Works Director had told me, that actually drain into that storm drain pipe into Parker, come down, and then they drain onto our property, all the stormwater does from all the streets.
There was a concern by one of the residents about how you're providing water. Could you, for usage, could you explain what the cities, what the cities requires you to do as far as providing water? I know that there are some water rights that you're required to provide along with that.
So this development, along with every other development in the state or in a lot of the cities around, you know, the state is growing. People are coming in. We have to find water, you know, we have to be conscious of the water that we use. We have to conserve, and so we haven't gotten that far as our landscape design, but it's going to continue to grow. I mean, my kids need somewhere to live, my grandkids, everyone is going to have that need. And so as of right now, the city requires that we go out and procure water rights, whether it's from Weber Basin or any water rights that the city can have. And we actually buy those water rights and turn them over to the city so the city can have the water to supply the homeowners. And so it's, in the past, historically, all the farmers have had the water rights, right? When, when they came here, they built the dams, they had the water rights, they used those rights to water their fields. As the fields get bought up, people use those, we buy those shares from the farmers and then the city, and turn them over to the cities, and then the cities have that water. Now, they have the rights to the water now to put in our pipes to take care of our residents. And so that's the process.
So I have a question. You said that they're going to be anywhere between 6,600 to, what'd you say, 9,000?
Our, our just lot, let me get back to that page. We have one lot that's 8,800.
So it's really only like .15 up to like .19, correct?
Lot, size of lot? Uh, lot, uh, size of lots?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
And they're abutting next to quarter acre lots?
No, they're not abutting to quarter acre lots.
What ones are you gonna have a butt to the quarter acre lots and the bigger homes back there?
There are, um, the ones that we're abutting to. Are eight thousand square, look, eighty-one hun- eighty-one twenty, eight thousand, eight thousand, eighty-two seventeen and ninety-seven forty-five. We are budding up against those with our homes. That are sixty-eight fifty-three, sixty-eight fifty, sixty-six fifty-three, sixty-six fifty-three, sixty-six fifty-three and sixty-two ninety-one. And eighty-eight thirty-five.
Okay.
The eighty-eight thirty-five, the eighty-eight hundred ones, those are, it's probably only two or three that are gonna be pie shaped in the corners. But the majority of those are gonna be the sixty-six hundred.
There is one, two, three. There's three lots over eight thousand with the fourth lot at seventy-seven hundred and the rest between. Uh, I take that back, sixty-three hundred and sixty-six hundred.
And you said they were gonna be patio homes at first? You said they were gonna, or just?
When we were going for the R four point five, we wanted narrower houses, two stories. And so with these little bit larger lots, we'll probably end up putting ramblers on there.
With basements?
No basements.
Are they gonna have lofts like you've done on forty-four hundred? That they, so they don't have to call it a two-story?
Um, we don't know, we haven't done any house plans, but I would, we do have a plan that has a loft that's been very popular, so yes.
Okay, so they wouldn't be called two stories, but they would?
They wouldn't be.
Basically, they would be.
But we really won't get into that until there's.
That's true, until there's, yes, that's true.
We're doing, it's just a blanket.
Excuse me, I just was trying to get a visual.
Yeah.
I do have one question and Mr. Eggit, maybe you can help us out with this. Um, the R one six, uh, versus the R eight. What's the lot, uh, distance between the edge of the property?
You asking that setbacks? That might require me just to do.
I've got it right here, Mike.
You have the difference of setbacks between the two?
Okay, R one eight minimum lot size is eight thousand square feet, minimum lot width is seventy feet. R one six is six thousand square feet, minimum lot sixty feet. The front yard setback and an R one eight is thirty feet and R one six is twenty-five feet. This side is, uh, once, they're both, the side setbacks are exactly the same, eight and ten. And, um, then it talks about side yards as far as corner lots and stuff like that, but they're very similar.
The rear setback, what's?
The rear setback on R one eight. Where is it? Rear setback is twenty-five feet for both of them.
So the only difference is the front setback?
Front setback.
The sides.
We can go up to twenty-five, R one eight goes back to thirty.
Is your plan still to taper into, and I'll fully disclose, I'm a real estate agent and I live in River Glen as well. Um, is your plan to still tie into the runoff of River Glen?
The runoff of River Glen. As far as the storm drain?
Yeah.
Yeah, so our plan, and we've got, had, we've already discussed this with city public works director and the city engineer. Is that our runoff will actually go down our street and just go out into where everybody else is draining their property.
And you remind me, are you gonna cut that down where it's so high?
Yeah, we have to because right now that, there, there, the from, the front lots will never flow up over the top and down. It's gotta, it's gotta come down and be cut down and brought down so that it, and go out towards where it currently drains. There's no way it'll flow right now, so that's why I say we're gonna have to cut that road down, push that dirt back or whatever the engineers tell us to do. And then we'll be able to be down at a lower level with, on the same level so that we're not sitting above the neighbors to the south of us.
I have, I have a little question. You, you're gonna put these homes, I understand, on pil- pyramids, down to the base rock?
Piers, helical piers.
Okay, how far down do you have to go to hit the base rock? Do we know how far?
We've done some testing out there, they went down. And, and it's what it is, is they're gonna have to go down about nine to twelve feet. It's all based on the tight, on, on the shear of how tight this, when they screw it in. They have a machine that tells them the torque of how tight it gets and that's when they determine. Once they hit that certain torque, then they can go ahead and, and stop and they know how much weight each one of those piers will hold. But in discussing it with Goliath Tech, who's going to be doing the work, they told us that we probably have to go anywhere between nine and twelve, thirteen feet.
Each pier?
So it doesn't have to go down?
How many piers are involved in a home?
Twenty to thirty? So they go down, they follow the edge of the home and so depends on the home. That they, they have to be about every eight feet and they call it grade beam construction. So those piers exist, or they're placed every, every eight feet. And then you run rebar around there, around that whole area and then you pour it, a beam around the foundation. And that's what holds the house up, is that grade beam. It's very, you know, they, they use it quite a bit.
How does, how does that react differently in a minor earthquake than a regular home would?
I don't know the answer to that question, but with my experience, I would think that would react better. In fact, with liquefaction, you're gonna, that, which I don't think exists is too much of an issue in Riverdale because you don't have many sands here, it's more of clay and gravel. But I would think it would stand up better in liquefaction, but you've got basically this house that's anchored down low. Um, whereas the ground is, you know, it wouldn't shake as much. I would, I, I don't know the answer to that, but I would think that it would, because of the design of the engineers, they have designed it for an earthquake event. And so they, uh, know how it's going to react. And so whether conventional construction with the foundation is any better than helical pairs, I don't know the answer to that question.
Can I ask you a question? This has no bearing on the rezoning or anything, this is just for my own. When you do those pads, are those pads more reinforced than a regular concrete pads?
Yes. So there has to be rebar through the floor, through the foundation. It's not a regular foundation, you pour footing down below, you put your walls on top and you just pour a concrete floor on the side. That's not this way. We actually have rebar that goes from one side to the other and it's all tied and it's all, and so it's, it's, it's almost kinda like, you know, when you go to a parking structure and you park on a piece of concrete that's about six inches thick. It's got all kinds of rebar and ties and everything through it. Same concept here, you've gotta have rebar in it and it's all determined by what the engineers call out for.
Plus the grid that you put over top, at the, on the top surface.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks.
Yeah, question. Someone said these homes are sta- gonna stand up higher than the other homes that's there. Is that still gonna be true? With these rebarred and all that kind of stuff going on?
No.
Actually be higher?
No, because you, looking at the home, you wouldn't even know that this home was sitting on piers. It's gonna be just a standard residential home. We're gonna be, our foundation is gonna be about a foot above the curb and gutter, maybe a foot and a half, just like all the other homes in the area, which is very common. And the only thing that would make any home any taller is if we did a two-story instead of a rambler. And so we don't have, we've got several plans that we build, we haven't determined which plan is going on which lot. And so it would be just like any other home that's in, as I drive through the, the neighboring subdivision. There are two-story homes in that subdivision and there's single-story homes and there's two and a half, there's split levels. There's all kinds of homes in that subdivision, so we're gonna be a ver- similar construction. Uh, the only thing is there are lot sizes are just a little bit smaller.
Well, there's, there, um, the CCNR stood up to the River Glen development specifically say. In the front part of the development, you can have the split entry homes. As they go further back, you have to have so much brick, so much stucco or rock, rock or stucco. Let's, rock, brick or stucco. And then as it goes back, how, how deep the lots need to be, as the ones on the back, the back along the, the river and the wetland. They have to be so big and they have to ha- meet certain criteria as well. That's why as you come around and the properties abutting to where you wanna be, they have to be bigger homes. Bigger lots. So the CCNRs state that and that's why we have all different types. But the CCNRs from the developer was put in place for exactly what is there and why.
Okay, yeah, I ha- I haven't read those CCNRs. So. But, uh, you know, that's, that's our plan. You've seen the type of, uh, design that we've done and the other subdivisions we've done. We're not gonna be using any vinyl siding, we're using stucco, hardy plank or a cement fiber board. We're using, uh, brick or s- uh, rock on, on the homes. And, uh, uh, that's how, that, that's our plan.
I just.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion would be in order.
I guess I'll make the motion. All right, I'd like to make a motion. We forward with a favorable recommendation to the city council. The proposed rezon request from agriculture A one zoning to single-family residential R one six for the property located at thirty-four fifty South Parker Drive, Riverdale, Utah, is requested by Mr. Hugh Park.
I'll second.
You said favorable?
Favorable.
Second?
I'll resecond it.
Wait, we need to. Would you pull the commission, please, Michelle?
Well, first, is there any discussion on the motion?
Oh, any discussion on the motion, okay. Would anyone like to?
I don't, it doesn't fit our master plan.
Nope, it doesn't.
It does not fit our, the use of our master plan, that agricultural. I mean, you're sitting right there next to the storage units, you have the buffer where that's at. And then, I mean, when they start digging to try to move that dirt, you don't know what's gonna come up out of that. That's why it's agricultural and that's why it's set.
Mr. Wingfield, would you be willing to maybe provide a, a reasoning or two for your, your decision with that motion?
Uh, yes, I would. The motion is, to be totally honest with you, I, I personally can't find a legal reason to say no.
I'm on the master plan?
All of my questions were answered and it's based on my understanding of where everything's at.
I feel, you know, with the changes that he's made from the original request to this one. Um, you know, I wasn't really in favor of the first, but, um. The new request, I feel, is a lot closer and, um. I don't think it's going to have the negative impact around to the other homes like the other would have. And, uh, I just feel like he's well-prepared for asking everything, or answering everything I've asked, so.
Well, they're gonna be smaller homes, abutting bigger homes. Again, you don't know what's under that soil. And the flooding issue.
Yeah, but with him putting in these piers that he's talking about. I mean, if it doesn't reach the torque that is required to run those down into the ground. You know, I mean, no matter what's down there, eventually he's going to hit something solid enough that it's going to hit the torque requirements that they need when they're driving those piers down.
Well, it's already affecting neighbors that, that are next to the property and all, and now you're gonna disturb that soil and it's gonna get worse.
But still, the piers are gonna go down into the ground after the fact. I mean, he's gonna level it out and then drive those piers in, the ground will be the same. Whether that dirt's four feet high now and drops down three feet, what he drives it into is still gonna be the same.
Well, and, and we don't know what the flooding effect will be. And I've seen a lot of times where subdivisions have been put in and they've actually, um. Because of the way the runoff is done, it's, uh.
Lessen the effect?
Lessen, lessen the problem.
They settled the storage units. And we flooded.
Yeah, but like Mike said, they've changed the, or they're in the process of changing that floodplain right now.
They don't have water right now, but we will.
Yeah, if there's no other discussion, then I think you'd be fine.
Okay.
Unless anybody else has any other items.
Michelle, so we need to pull the commission, Michelle, please.
Commissioner Jones?
Yay. Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Mr. Spires?
Nay.
Mr. Eskelson?
Nay.
Mr. Herman?
Aye.
Mr. Wingfield?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
That's four ayes and three nays.
Sorry.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
So just to clarify so that everybody's aware, that means that that will advance to the city council. I will talk to the city administrator and make sure that you keep track of the agenda to see when that will be on a city council meeting.
Thank you.
We don't have any more chance to comment tonight here?
Your next opportunity will be before the city council during the public comment section of their meeting, when that's heard by the city council.
We're just sending a recommendation to the city council and they'll vote on the final.
That's correct.
All right, so we're finished with that. Next action item, review and discussion of proposed rezon request for property located at approximately six seventy-one West Forty-four Hundred South. Riverdale, Utah, as requested by H and H Thirty-Ninth Street LLC. Mr. Eggit?
Thank you, get to this next one. Um, Mr. Matt Steiner is present with us, he's been waiting throughout the, the meeting to, to join us. So if you do have any kind of light level questions, again, we're talking very satellite view. For the purposes of this, we've done this enough to kinda know now, I've, I've talked to you numerous times about what we can talk about at this level. But he is available to answer some questions. We have talked about it. This is for the Luzzies Mobile Home Park property here, just on the north side of Riverdale Road. Um, the, the request is, has been brought forward as you remember back in, I believe it was March of a year ago. A request was for an R five on this property. Um, the, the city council at the time determined that, uh, they would not approve that rezon request. And the reasoning for that was, uh, because the, the master plan did not support that. In the case this evening, um, uh, Mr. Steiner's group, uh, eight, H and H Thirty-Ninth Street has requested a rezon change to an R four zoning, which is partially matching with the land use master plan in the general plan as it relates to the use of that R four for townhome. Specifically, it says in the, in the ordinance, owner occupied townhome, um, uses is what would be supportive of as R four use. So, uh, that has been shared with his group, but, uh, this is really more just an introduction to the planning commission and also to request then thereafter, item B, which is formally scheduling that meeting. Uh, we're the planning commission in favor, we do have a set aside to have a change of venue to the community center on, or, yeah, community center gym on June twenty-eighth, um, and it, we will have, uh, staff and other, uh, staff assistants there for that meeting at that time. So with that, I would defer to the planning commission, if you'd like Mr. Steiner to come up, if you have any comments or questions for him before we move on and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner, will you tell us the city, your city of residence?
Um, I, um, Matt Steiner from Holliday, Utah, I'm the attorney that represents H and H Thirty-Ninth, who owns the property.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions, Mr. Steiner?
No, we're just in a public hearing.
Okay, then, uh.
Will you be here for the public hearing?
Yes.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, s- set a date for the public hearing for pro- proposed rezon request for Mobile Home Park Recreational Vehicle Park, uh, from R M H dash one zoning to multiple family residential R four zoning for property located approximately six seventy-one West Forty-four Hundred South Riverdale. Utite four four zero five is requested by H and H, uh, Thirty-Ninth Street LLC. Uteite four four zero five is requested by H and H uh, Thirty Ninth Street LLC. Uh, the date to be for June the twenty eighth. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous.
Okay, so we'll let, yeah, we'll expect Mr. Steiner will be here and obviously following the public hearing, we'll move forward with a a rezon uh, consideration thereafter as a recommendation.
We're having it the.
Yes. I communicated that to him today and I will make sure that that he.
Do our uh, notices with the right location and everything.
That's true. We, so I will need to get you that address. So I will email that to you tomorrow. Cause they are required to obviously notify all residents in the Mobile Home Park as well with the rezon.
There's a state law to have it.
If.
Certain number of days ahead of the hearing.
If you receive calls or inquiries, direct anybody who contacts you to the website for more information or obviously have them call city staff, okay? It it it's not your role to have to discuss the the request. I mean, you at your own discretion can entertain a discussion as you see appropriate, but you're not required to. How's that? Okay?
Very good. Can we direct him to Steve?
Yeah, if you, you can also direct him to Mr. Brooks, who's the city administrator, yes.
We probably shouldn't even tell him what our own opinion is.
Yeah, I I would have strongly avoid that. That's why I would say at your own discretion, but I would stick to facts and I would certainly not.
Cause technically, we're supposed to listen to every.
I would keep.
Input and then.
Listen when it is, where it is to receive input. There's a public hearing. I would not go into any more detail from your own personal perspective at that point.
So two weeks from tonight.
Uh huh.
Now, where in the city is the the rec center?
If if you go.
You know where the school is? It's just, you just go.
Just up around the corner.
Few hundred feet up where the roundabout is, take a left, I mean a right, and you'll s- you'll drive right to it.
Next big building on the right hand side before you get to the fire station.
Okay. It's an entrance to the park and all that right in that area, so. Big enough, right?
It's it's part of the playground.
So, I mean, if I think if we had the majority, if not all residents, we probably could still accommodate them in that gymnasium if we had to, so.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Steiner.
Wear your Kevlar vest.
Yeah.
I motion to adjourn.
We're we're not in adjournment. I have I have more good news to share.
Report.
Reporting discussion of two thousand and twenty two legislative upgrade regarding land use regulation and amendments, Mr. Eggit.
Thank you. Um, so in your packet, starting on page thirty four, or maybe it's thirty, it looks like thirty five. Um, I provided the Utah League of Cities and Towns report on the land use updates that have been made of the last general session. Um, and within that, I provided, I think there's about eight pages of it. My intent is to try to cover the ones that are most applicable. Maybe you glaze over a few of them, but go through them all. Um, so if you have questions along the way, if you want to chime in your thoughts, feel free. This is obviously an open dialogue opportunity, but it is it is imperative of me to educate you as part of of my requirements so that you're aware of how things are changing. Um, the first one then, looking at Mr. Waldrop's bill, House Bill Thirty Six, Substitution Two, Commission on Housing Affordability Amendments. Back in nineteen, uh, or excuse me, two thousand and eighteen, the state set up what was called Commission on Housing Affordability. That's the group that I was explaining in the work session that continues to discuss housing regulations, changes in housing standards and how local governments interface with builders and housing development. That is, that's the big committee that's making all these decisions and changing these things, okay? They, as part of that, have created uh, enough changes to, technical changes to state code and have applied them to to cities within the last years. You can see in that paragraph, SB thirty four, SB thirty nine, SB one sixty four, and now HB four sixty two, which I'll cover in a moment. Um, they're all now more officially recognized by the state as part of this Unified Economic Opportunity Commission. So what that means is the governor has now endorsed this commission as having more weight and more bearing on how these bills are applied to cities. That that's what you take away from that. The city to the governor's office is saying, we endorse, we support, we're behind. We like what they're doing.
Eliminate us?
No, you, the the planning commission will still have responsibilities. And and again, I wasn't, what I said earlier wa- in the work session was not meant to be any form of scare tactic. It was meant to be a guidance or advisory, like we need to be really careful with the the responsibility and the decision-making we have. So as to show that that the rumors, ideas are out there that maybe in other cities are not being done correctly, doesn't apply to Riverdale, right? So that when we go to our representatives and senators and say, hey, do not support this. We don't operate this way. We we can stand behind that, right? So, um, the intent then is to, they're they're trying to find ways to create bills that give them more thou shouts without fully taking away all rights of local entities and legislative bodies to make decisions. But it is getting harder and harder to wean through that. It's a lot more thou shouts year after year. And the fear from the mayor is that it'll be an ultimate thou shout that says you'll have so much percentage of this zone, so much percentage of this one, so much percentage of this one, and this is what this zoning code means.
Well, maybe we'll be completely developed by then.
But it'll still apply, cause you'll always have redevelopment. And you can imagine, let me tell you, look at Clearfield and see what happens to traditional home lots on one or two acres and see how they turn into multifamily developments within six months.
And apartments.
Yeah, that's exactly it. So you could say that, but the reality is if the state legislature says this and it applies to traditional zoning, you could start to see apartments coming up.
And you've got beautiful homes and then you've got these.
Yep, that's.
I mean, right next.
Yep, and I heard.
Could be what's coming next if this doesn't.
What?
Uh, high-rise.
Dentrification.
Yeah.
Yeah, the people don't want a yard and it all that anymore.
No.
And and in fact, our building, our building official told me today that uh, he heard Congress, federal Congress is looking at requirements where in states have to implement codes to allow for tiny home, tiny home subdivisions in the community. Like it'll be mandatory, that you'll have to have tiny home subdivisions be available in your community.
So part of the subdivision has to be dedicated to tiny homes.
Tiny homes. Tiny home development.
Nowadays, at least.
So, so kind of interesting, not to tangent, but but the the point with this is to show you the the state's support for this commission of affordable housing, it's or housing affordability, it's not going anywhere. It's getting emboldened and strengthened. That's the point. I'm I'm trying to bring that up and bring that up to this meeting. Now, next one, House Bill Two Thirty Two, Substitution Two, Utah Lake Authority. This one is interesting. This is a government oversight commission that was created to establish a political subdivision of the state to work in concert with applicable federal, state and governmental entities, property owners, owners of water rights, private party stakeholders, to encourage, facilitate, and implement the management of Utah Lake. The reason I bring that up, it shows you how, again, they're creating these special commissions for regional areas of the community. So who's to say there won't someday be a Weaver County Authority, Weaver County Housing Authority that does something similar? So again, you gotta think about that, right? That that's what this is telling us, that they might start now taking regional regional authority powers and have a government liaison or government liaisons guiding community areas and decision-making. That that's what this is is reflecting to us. This is specifically because Utah Lake is such a large area and has a lot of impacts and choices and nobody can get along. So the garment stepping it in to try to to liaise outcomes to that are reasonable for everybody to equally be unhappy. Best way I can explain it. That's what it feels like, okay? All right, moving on, House Bill Three O Three, Substitution Three, Local Land Use. Um, this started out as just being a land use noticing bill and has turned into an amendment to Ludma, which is the state land use development bill. Um, there's, you'll have to read through it. I don't want to bore you with the details, but do read through them, please, on page thirty seven and and number twenty nine from their document. Do read through the changes, cause there's changes to a little bit, minor tweaks to annexations, subdivision improvement. This one is just requires local entities to provide melon notice in a public hearing before changing the standards for public improvements, subdivisions, developments. So it makes a little bit more, you have to notify developers in your community the best you can. Our t- our s- road standards are changing this way. Now we have to let them know. Um, the the burden approved for non-conforming use. Um, let's see, so does this.
Mike, can I just say that non-conforming use, that would be, I mean, that would be just what we approve, not approved, but pass on. That was a non-conforming use, right?
No, a non-conforming use is like, if you have a home in a zone and you change it, let's say you had, at one point, the I'm trying to think what the best way to explain this would be, cause I have a few of these. Let's say you have lots that you at one point were forty five hundred square feet and you got and rezoned it to R two. Those lot, and the minimum lot size is now eight thousand square feet. You've now created non-con- non-conforming lots within the R two zone, right? So those people now um, are not within compliance. So what it matters is if there was like a a any ki- they can't improve on their home, they can't change their footprint. They can't do certain things when you have a non-conforming structure and a non-conforming lot. This, this is basically saying, if it's not clear whether the property is legally non-conforming or not, someone just has to show substantial evidence to show that it is, and the city can't contest it. So if the city can't say, yeah, that's a non-conforming use or a non-conforming lot, builder or property owner says, well, I have enough evidence to say that I should get the protections of it being a non-conforming use or a non-conforming lot. That's what this is saying. That's why I interpret it, at least. Um, subdivision bounty line adjustments. This one is interesting. This one has started coming up more frequently. Permit cities to adopt code provisions that provide that lot combinations are not subdivision amendments and a provision that specifies that cities operating with, that one don't matter. Capital project, okay. So the first part is the one that matters. We do get frequently lot combination requests. And the state has really sided with property owners. If you have two lots and you try and combine them in one, it shouldn't have to go through a land use regulation process. I don't typically do that anyway. We do have some requirements by the county, but I just want to make you aware. If ever that was asked or you say, hey, Mike, I'm aware of this thing. Why did you approve that without bringing it to us? Well, that's why the state says that that's how I need to treat those situations. They're they're not a subdivision or land use. They're just a jointer of lots by one common property owner.
Does that apply also when they're, they have a large lot and they want to split it?
No, that would be, so so joining lots, making them bigger. Subdividing lots comes here.
Even if it's just.
Two lots, doesn't matter.
Or what size?
Any subdivision comes here. So it's kind of interesting.
So if if people want to build a mom and pop little casita on their house or next to it or at the backyard.
And they acquire property from neighboring property owner, again, they would have to be legal, they'd have to be already legally recognized lots. But if they bought their neighbor's lot and they own them both, and they say, I'm gonna merge them all into one, it won't come through you.
But what if they want to build an extra little house onto the house?
No.
The existing.
You have to have two just separate building lots.
Okay, thank you.
But if you wa- want to make your home bigger and you need more real estate and your neighbor was willing to sell to you and it became your property and you joined them, you could now have one big lot building lot. This planning commission, city council won't see that, but it would be able to be recorded as such. That's what this is saying could happen.
So you can't divide off a big lot into a smaller one, so you can put like family on it?
Right, it'd have to be already existing lots. You couldn't go and start doing incremental subdivisions and call it justified. That still has to come to this group.
And you, you sign off on those?
Actually, I do, and then the city attorney does as well, yeah. And then presumption legal review, uh, which inclusionary zoning doesn't apply to us. Text amendment noticing, this one's kind of interesting. Calls for those provisions to text amendments to land use cost to include a summary of the effect of the proposed modifications to the text of the zoning code to be provided any to person upon written request. In other words, if someone comes to me and says, hey, Mike, what are you guys doing to your land use code? Put it in in residentees so I can understand what you're trying to say to me. I have to provide that to them and make it very clear what's happening, what's changing, so they understand it. Not in technical planning jargon that confuses people.
Words of one syllable.
Yeah, very simple stuff, yes. All right, uh, House Bill Three Fifty Seven, eminent domain appraisal, requires government entity to obtain an appraisal within ninety days and make any settlements. Just talking about condemnation, eh, it doesn't really matter too much. Inland port authority, another port authority, another authority. This one's been around for a little while. This one basically is saying that i- it's a state subdivision that can come in, take areas of land in any county, say, we're gonna develop this up for job growth and job hub. And with that job growth and job hub, we're gonna tell you, city, how the site's gonna develop. But we may or may not give you some incremental benefit from using real estate in your jurisdiction and telling you what to do with it. That's the best way I can explain it. And and so what this is saying is, they can, they now have to try to negotiate capture and uses and benefits back to city, whereas before they didn't have to. So this is their way of trying to soften the original intent of this inland port authority power that they have. That's what this b- bill is meant to do. But it also modifies the membership of the board and eliminates specific seats for municipalities to be part of the inland port authority as a result of this change. So cities no longer get saved, but they're supposed to be more friendly to how they use and give increment back to the cities where they established these port areas. So again, it's kind of seen some trends, right? Unfortunately.
On every level.
The last one is the, is actually second to last. I lied. House Bill Four Sixty Two, Substitution Two, Utah Housing Affordability Amendments. This one is the big dog. This is the one that has, it gives me the most stress and and is gonna be very, very impactful to the general plan long term. Um, this comes back to, we have had over the last two years, tried to do a reporting of all the um, through state bill or senate bill thirty four. We have had to do all of the reporting on moderate income housing plan menu items. What are we doing in our community to create moderate income housing plan opportunities in Riverdale? How is it working? So every year I've had to do a list, try to do kind of an explanation of what the program is, and then as years have gone on, explain whether or not the pro- programs are working with words and as many as numbers are available. Last year we did it and the census numbers were not available. So it makes it really hard to show how your community is progressing when you don't have census numbers. That being said, there's been some flaws in the plan. They thought, well, let's overhaul the whole thing. But with the overhaul, let's now make it part of your general plan. Now you're, now you're held responsible and accountable for your moderate income housing plan as part of your general plan. So now you can't just say, well, there's this report over here, we might work on it. It now has to be a living, breathing, organic piece of your general plan that becomes part of your policies, making m- moderate income housing, which is code for housing options in your community readily available in the next, you know, ten to twenty years, like you're working towards it.
Who reviews those?
The state will. I have to turn them into the state of Utah.
Is there a department or something?
There's been a carved out new department within Department of Workforce Services just for this program. They hired a bunch of new employees and they will review these and they will at their discretion guide and assist cities.
Steve Waldrop from, where does he live?
He's from Weber Valley.
Weber Valley?
Mm hmm. He's at Weber Valley, yeah. Um, and he's on the housing commission for affordability. Now, in all fairness to his side of it, and I understand his side of it, and it is legitimate. I don't necessarily like the tactics, but they feel like they don't have any other options. There are definitely demographics out there that can't find housing. And they definitely need housing. So I need to be very careful in that this is an attempt to do that. It's just, it's very burdensome on the cities, especially when it becomes part of the general plan to say, cities, you you not only now share in this, you have to actively create and implement and find ways to do it, which we are doing. We definitely have, as a result of the legislative duress, been more open to a multiple family housing options in Riverdale, which is not necessarily a bad thing. What I get worried about is the tipping point at when do you say enough's enough, you know? At what point does Clearfield say, we've diluted our our single family housing to multifamily to a point where we need to stop? Or do they never stop? And they just keep driving down and and taking away more traditional housing as a trade-off, right?
And somebody's making a buck out of it.
That that's what I get worried about. And so when this kind of stuff gets into your general plan and that pressure is there and we have to do this year by year. So the way it works, I have to incorporate this into our general plan by or before October first and report it to all the state entities this year to start the menu. And then every year thereafter, I have to do an updated report as a result of what's in the general plan uh, at the end of the fiscal cycle, which would be at the end of June of every year. So June, this time next year, I'll be stressed out trying to show if we've accomplished what is in the general plan and reporting it to this new entity of the Department of Workforce Services.
And what if it just drowns us?
Well, that that was the question that, like, like in our city, I'm gonna have to rely on specialists to help me, right? And a good thing we're starting up a general plan update process that will start in in July, because otherwise it might be very complicated to pull this off.
Yes.
So we'll we'll do the best we can, but it may not be perfect the first time.
How does that affect the existing multifamily structures that we have? I mean.
That that, we can use it.
Those count towards what your requirements and all that are?
Kind of, this came up in the discussions too. It, I mean, this is hard for me, cause there's been like eighteen months of discussion that's led up to this thing as it is now. But what I can say is, the answer, easy answer is yes and no. It's great we have multifamily housing and it's great we developed it, but it's irrelevant when it comes to explaining the plan to going forward and creating new moderate income housing.
So what we have doesn't count towards anything. They want you to just keep putting more in.
And find ways to create more.
We could dilute the whole city with.
What's going on?
If we brought in a cemetery.
There's no way it could have stopped.
So i- it's it's about creating flexibility and variety. That the the biggest challenge that cities have said, and that and nobody will answer this question frankly, is that's great that you're creating this requirement on us, but where are all the builders that are building? that's great that you're creating this requirement on us, but where are all the builders that are building the moderate income housing developments? Where are all the builders that are creating the sixtieth percentile units where people that are only making sixty, sixty percent of the current moderate income level in Riverdale? Where are those builders, right? And they're like, well, you as a city can create programs, incentivize that. Well, I can tell you personally, I have been trying with multiple multifamily developers to encourage sixty percent. And the minute I say sixty percent, they should often say, well, we may or may not be able to do that. Well, I say, what about eighty percent? Well, we might be able to get a few units at eighty percent. So that's nice that the state's doing this, but the reality is it's really hard to get anybody to commit to anything less than eighty percent.
You may have said this already, but what do you mean by sixty percent?
So like, if the average median income household for a household of four in Riverdale, it's about sixty-five to seventy thousand, right? So eighty, you take eighty percent of that for a household of four persons, that's that's considered moderate income housing need. Sixty is considered like middle moderate income housing and thirty percent is considered severe need, right? So I would never ever be able to get somebody, even if I put it in the plan right now, there's no one that's going to come in and say, I'm going to build a whole development of thirty to sixty percentile housing in your community at multifamily, just won't happen. But yet I have to cater in the plan efforts to try to encourage and 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 support that kind of development where possible.
Yeah, but you know, I I think of myself when I, uh, when I was younger um, and, uh, starting out and things like that. I mean, we lived in a, in a mobile home for ten years and, uh, and got enough equity in our mobile home that that actually that's what helped us get into the house, the house that we're in. You know, I mean, there there are ways for people to to do these things and they're always have been. I don't understand.
But if we have.
Why the requirement all of a sudden?
If we have a, if we have a poster child of one that's not functioning correctly, and then we look to gentrify it, right? We're talking about one coming up in two weeks and gentrify it, right?
There's no way to move those people.
And and those people, when they go and redevelop it, aren't going to redevelop thirtieth percentile, fiftieth percentile housing, right? And the most of the.
Thirtyth percentile housing is what they have down there now.
So, right, so, but but I can, which is good. At least I've been able to get them to to verbally commit potentially if it is redeveloped at some later date. They will put in eightieth percentile housing units, which is a win for us because we can then deflect the state and say, hey, look, we're trying, right? But if I, if if I or we as a city put in the general plan, these efforts, but then we just put in hundred percent plus rental units at at multifamily, we're not achieving the goals of the state and it still makes us look bad. So multifamily development isn't necessarily the solution. It's development that will try to cater to the impacted percentages of population.
Well, well, and it's got to be property that somebody wants to live on and and, you know, it yeah, I I can sort of understand the the mini homes because that could be a, you know, a replacement, for example, of
Yeah.
Everybody's moving away from mobile home parks.
Right, it's.
So that could be.
A replication.
That could be a, uh, replacement kind of of what that niche used to to fill.
Yeah.
But, uh, you know, I.
Well, redevelopment, they could offer homesteads where people have to go in and are required to do so much improvement to the house.
Sure sweat equity.
On federal loans, if you can get them, because nobody else is going to fund it.
Yeah.
So so this, the reason I'm bringing this all up, we're going to do a general plan update. You're going to start to see this stuff coming forward. The planning commission will be involved in the general plan update. I don't want you to be surprised when I start bringing these things forward and and you say, what is this, Mike? Why are you doing this? Okay, so I won't say much more about that. The only other thing I'll note, if we were ever to get a rel or bus rabbit transit area, we are required to create what's called Station Area Plan to increase availability and affordability of housing around that station area, promote sustainable environmental conditions, enhance access to opportunities at that location and increase transportation choices. And we have to have a full plan document that explains how that plan will develop and benefit from having it. So we don't want any gifts from UT. I shouldn't joke and say that, but. It's crazy. And and if you have like three or four, you have to do one for every station area point in your community. Yeah. Now, the next one, uh, Senate Bill one ten, substitution one, water is part of the general plan. There you go again. It's another fun thing we have to add to our general plan. We are now required by Senate Bill one ten to amend our general plan to consider how land use impact, planning impacts water use. So by December thirty-first, we have to have in our general plan a whole water conservation element guide as part of the general plan. I have put that in RFQ that I I'm working on doing for the general plan update. It will be part of it. It only applies to cities of the fourth class, but we're dangerously close to the fourth class. We're at nine thousand plus residents. When you cross ten thousand residents, you're fourth class. So you're required to do it if you're a fourth class city. We will be probably by the time we're at twenty twenty-five. So I'm just going to go ahead and have it be part of our general plan update now. But it is about, it says, uh, items should include, when amending the plan, the planning commission shall consider various items including effective permitted development on water demand, methods of reducing water, opportunities to modify municipal operations to conserve water, regional water conservation plans and principles of sustainable landscaping. Good thing is, we can already check off the principles of sustainable landscaping. That landscaping update was huge. We were one of the first two cities in this region to do that and benefit from the flip a strip program for Weber Basin. So that, we can easily say we've done it and it's part of our code and look at it as part of our general plan. So that's a win.
Can we reduce our citizenship by the waters that leave?
Well, unfortunately, obviously, in light of four sixty-two, we're probably going to have more residents than community before we have less. So that's the reality. I did a build out, I did a build out based on projects I know are forthcoming and based on projects that are coming. And it looks like the residential load could get as high as thirteen thousand residents by twenty thirty. Twenty, actually, I think it's twenty thirty-five. Yeah, so.
I was going to bring nine thousand more jobs on base, so.
Yeah, and America First is growing up to.
Well, they'll be coming from all over for those.
So, um, so that's, that's it. Uh, I, but I, I've been wanting to bring this update to you for a while. I appreciate you being patient with me. Um, but I feel like it's very pertinent information that you need to know, especially as we go through another cycle. There are that that Housing Commission is already starting up again. And like I said, there's a bunch of stuff on the table that they're considering. And they're going to make it even tighter on cities to even show more moderate income housing, which I am going to be editorial here. It's ludicrous. It is the developer's responsibility to take some of that that onus on them and do it right, but they're not. And nobody is telling the developers to try to develop responsibly and give us some of those units when they come develop. They're saying, well, cities, you should craft something to hold developers' hands to the fire to give you units at sixtieth percentile. We'll try, try to do it. You know, legislators come down and tell us, show us exactly how to pull that off then. Your developers, why don't you show us? So that that's my only editorial comment on this whole thing. And I've been trying not to be editorial, but that bothers me, so. And I'm not the only one. There's plenty of other cities that feel that same way.
So when you do these, do they have to approve it before you?
We just have to show in our general plan that we've done it and they review it. And if they feel like it's deficient or we need guidance, they will assist us in helping us to craft it in better language to to accommodate what they're seeking.
When a new development is going in, does it have to go to them?
No, not at this time.
Does the same routine and then at the end of the year you report it?
It's just the general plan, then, yeah, at the end of the year. I I if I can report, let's say, for instance, well, I won't use that one. Let's say, for instance, down here, the the sixty-eight acres, they develop over the next ten years, a bunch of housing. And I'm able to articulate that I negotiated with them fifty units at eighth percentile. I would, I would report that and that would make us look good to the Department of Workforce Services that we at least have some moderate income housing as part of that project.
So what are the consequences if you don't?
You lose, you'll, you will lose UDOT transportation funding. That's, that's their, that's their carrot. They'll pull away your ability to have roads, transportation funding offered by UDOT. Where right now, we've just been getting it. They'll take it away.
Do you get a lot from that?
Yeah.
But as site plans come through, is that anything that we can address with the developers, saying, what are you doing to address?
We certainly, you certainly could ask for it or encourage it. And you should probably should going forward as much as you can, especially if it's, if it's got some kind of a multifamily component to it.
That's not a carrot, it's a threat. We need a carrot for the the builders.
It's, it's, it's a challenging time and, you know, I've tried to really be as, as neutral as I can, but I sat in a lot of legislative policy committee meetings and heard a lot of anxiety of a lot of city leaders throughout the state of Utah. And so I'm also trying to reflect some of their anxieties and what I can tell you. So.
If you're going to encourage them, they're not going to, most of them are going to.
That's the tricky part. How, and we, we all don't know. How do you get a developer to actually responsibly add some of this? We don't have an answer to cities right now. And state legislature is not really helping us figure that out.
If you can't get them to do it and it affects the UDOT funds that you get.
Right, here we are. So the best you can do is try to follow the rules and get things in your general plan and report and hope you're doing it the best you can and hope the state will give you a break.
They should throw some of that burden on the contractors too, rather than just the cities. I mean, contractors there to make a buck and if you can make more money by doing it the one ways.
And and that's the craziest part. I don't, I think we as a city have come a long way and been more open to multifamily and and variable housing. But when I have that conversation, more and more trying to meet this new four sixty-two, blank faces.
Are they going to make us rezone things so that we can put?
That's the fear next.
Housing.
That's, that's the next fear. That's what the fear is.
So if we go through this new general plan, we're going to want to keep that in mind. Um, that, that we, uh,
speak of what we have.
Those requirements.
Well, and and the concern is, obviously, this zoning thing is, 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 at this point, until it becomes real, don't give it any weight. Because the general plan, we'll do it as, as we have zoning and regulatory powers now. If something were to change, we'll just amend the general plan. Okay? That's all I have.
Okay, a motion.
I move we adjourn.
All in favor?